The rest of the persons. Doctor Sebastian is still here. Mr. C is still here. Mr. Tanyada, Attorney Tanyada of Coca-Cola is still here. And then one more.
I see the bag of a resource person present, but I do not see the person holding the bag. Ang gana.
Ante, Mr. Sir. Ante? Antel. Mr. Antes.
Thank you, thank you. We also like to thank the former Administrator, Mr. Serafika, for your presence here. I just wish that we had you early this morning. But, Mr. Secretary, can you administer the oath to...
Can you raise your head to say yes? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Serafika. To expedite the proceedings and while waiting for our other colleagues to arrive, and with the permission of my colleague here, Senator Estrada, perhaps we can ask the resource persons coming from the private sector relative to their knowledge, participation, concurrence, remedial reactions as to the issuance of SO number four. And I'm referring to the representative coming from Coca-Cola as well as the representative coming from the Philippine Food Processors and Exporters Association. Ang tanong po namin dito ay maliwa... ay simple lang. Sa inyo po bang pananaw? I'm referring to Mr. C and the representative of Coca-Cola. Yun po bang SO number four? At 'yung sinasabing pagkukulang o shortage ng asukal, lalong-lalo na 'yung ginagamit ng industriya, hindi ng consumers, ay totoo? May we start with Mr. Robert Roben C, who arrived first? Thereafter, same question. Thereafter, the representative coming from Coca-Cola. And if Senator Estrada would want to interject additional follow-up questions, he may do so as he please. Mr. C, Robert Roben C? Nandito po ba?
Yes, sir.
Asan po kayo?
Nandito po.
Ay, I'm sorry, dun ako nakatingin. Kasi dun kayo kanina eh. So, pakisagot lang po 'yung katanungan ko. And kung meron po kayong prepared sworn statement na wala pa sa kamay ng aming committee, eh pwede po sigurong iwan? Meron po ba kayo?
Meron po akong binigay na sworn statement.
Kailan po binigay yun?
This morning, sir. And saka ini-mail din po namin.
Can we have a copy of that? Siguro later on. But you answer... Please proceed and answer my question.
Well, with regards po sa SO three or four, so far, ang knowledge po namin is nagagaling din po sa mga nababasa namin sa artikulo. And then, alam mo namin talaga na may shortage ng asukal. So based dun po sa mga artikulo. Then, 'yung industry po naman namin, we are affected doon ng...
Can I cut you briefly? When you say shortage, is it a real shortage or an artificial shortage?
Well, based lang po sa nababasa namin. So hindi po namin alam kung totoo yun o hindi.
Pero kayo po ang presidente ng Philippine Food Processors and Exporters Association. So sa inyo po bang organisasyon ay minararamdaman kayong shortage o pagkukulang ng asukal?
Wala naman po.
So wala pong shortage?
Wala po. Ang problem lang po ng our industry is 'yung high cost of sugar.
Iho kaya related 'yung high cost ng sugar sa shortage. Dahil kulang ang nasa merkado, ay hindi sapat ang mapunuan 'yung demand.
Well, yun po 'yung nararanasan ng industry namin eh.
So mahal?
Mahal po, oo.
Mahal, kasi may shortage.
Yes.
So, ang tanong ko nga po, 'yung bang shortage eh gawa-gawa lang o totoong may shortage? Kasi nakita niyo po 'yung pinakitang video ni Senate President na dagat-dagat na raw po. Patas-patas, patong-patong, ang naka-imbak na asukal sa mga warehouses.
Well, based doon sa nakita namin, parang wala akong shortage. Pero based naman po doon sa sinabi ni Yusek Sebastián, dahil sa usage daw oh, so parang kukulangin pa. So hindi po namin alam kung which one is ano. Pero yun nga hong masasabi namin, sa industry po namin, usually kami hong mga exporter, kailangan po namin ng mababang presyo ng asukal. Kasi po, kung the cost of sugar is high, hindi po magiging competitive ang exporter. Sa ngayon po kasi, if you buy from Thailand or Asian countries, the price of sugar landed cost in the Philippines is only about 40 pesos. But as of now, if the price is 80 pesos to 100 pesos, the industry will not be competitive.
Matanong ko po, sir. Ano po 'yung ine-export natin na nangangailangan ng asukal na ang palagay niya napakamahal ngayon? Ano po 'yung uri ng mga ine-export natin? Ito po ba ay mga kakaning dilata? Ito po ba 'yung mga pagkain na pinoprocess natin na kailangan ng sugar preservatives? Ano po yun? Bigbigay kayo ng halimbawa.
Ang industry po namin, a member po namin is composed of 'yung mga gumagawa ng biscuit, gumagawa ng snacks, gumagawa ng juice, gumagawa ng dried fruits, sweets, 'yung condiments po. Mostly yun po 'yung mga nangangailangan ng asukal.
So ito po 'yung halimbawa, 'yung dried mango?
Yes, opo.
O mga confectionery, opo. So naintindihan ko na po ngayon. So dalawang tanong na lang po. Kung nandito po kayo kanina, while you were here, nabanggit po, it was mentioned over and over again by Mr. Former Undersecretary Sebastián that there were consultations made prior to the issuance of SO number four. And there were attachments made to SO number four. My question is this. Was your group consulted? Was there an attachment or a board resolution coming with the Philippine Food Processors coming from your group supporting SO number four?
Well, we are not consulted.
You were not consulted?
Yes, sir.
And yet, you're a major stakeholder in any sugar consumption or importation. Ilan percent po yun? Itong sa Philippine Food Processors? Ang nagagamit niyong asukal na...
Well, as of now, 'yung mga member po namin, we can use six sacks to 450 sacks per week.
Nationwide?
Naka-sugar po. Yeah, nationwide po.
Maraming salamat. Unless Senator Estrada has a follow-up question, this just goes to show that one, there was no prior consultation made contrary to the assertion of Yusek Sebastián that such was made prior to the issuance of sugar order number four. Ang... I will skip the second question because it was partly answered with the permission of Senator Estrada, Senator Padilla, and Senator De La Rosa, who returned like a good general who promised I shall return. I now ask the representative from Coca-Cola. News reports indicate that your group were one of those present and whose clamor was given an affirmative response by the president himself. Is this true? And how would you answer if I asked the same question I propounded to Mr. C? Is there a shortage? Is there an artificial shortage? Is there a natural shortage? And is SO number four rightful? Rightfully issued or improper because there is hoarding? Would you like to answer in Tagalog or in English? Bahala na po kayo.
Salamat po. Good afternoon po, your honors. Attorney Juan Lorenzo Tanyada po appearing for and on behalf of our CEO Garrett McGion, who's not present today because he's currently abroad in consultation with our principals in Singapore. Your honors, I would answer first of all that, yes, we feel the scarcity of sugar in our operations. Yes, we were present po at that meeting called For the Purpose. And we attended it at the Department of Agriculture, I believe, on August 2, 2022. Your honor, if I may, our CEO actually executed an affidavit. If I would be allowed po, I may be able to read it into the record.
That will be hearsay if you extract from the portions of the affidavit. Mr. Secretary, do we have a copy of that affidavit? Is this from Mr. Garrett McGion?
That's correct, your honor.
Wala pa copy. We don't have a copy here. So I hope you can be... Ah, it's in the tick folder. You can have the gist. You can have the gist. Will the gist answer my questions?
Yes, your honor.
So there is a shortage, scarcity?
Yes, your honor. If we refer po particularly to paragraph three of the affidavit.
Go ahead, go ahead. The hanapin ko. Please proceed, sir.
Opo. Your honor, kung pwede ko pumba sa inyong paragraph three. Coca-Cola's manufacturing process requires the use of bottler's grade premium refined sugar instead of merely standard refined sugar. Since the beginning of 2022, we began to observe a scarcity of bottler's grade premium refined sugar as well as a dramatic surge in prices of what available stocks we could source. So, sa madaling salita po, your honor, magmula ng umpisa po ng taong ito, nahihapan na po kami magmanufacture in the customary manner. Kaya po, minabuti na po namin na tumangguni po sa mga may kinuukulan upang humingi po ng tulong.
Is the first time that this happened?
Actually, your honor, we felt some shortages before. But I would say, based on my seven years po in the Coca-Cola system, ito na po sigurong pinakagrabe.
What about the instance when SO number three was issued? Were you affected?
Binigyan po kami ng allocation nun ng 10,000 metric tons po yata, your honor. Pero nung nakup po namin 'yung 10,000 metric tons na yun, kundi po nagkakamali, dalawa o tatlong araw lang po naubos na siya.
So, in effect, you are refuting the statements coming from the Senate President, including the visuals that there is an enough buffer of sugar in warehouses apparently not being distributed. We welcome the arrival of the good Senate President. You are just being refuted by the representative coming from Coca-Cola. We will give the Senate President a chance to rebut you, Attorney. So you are refuting the statements of the Senate President. There is no sugar shortage, scarcity, and the issuance of SO number four is in order. Am I correct?
If I may po, sir.
Hindi, sabutin mo muna ako. Tama ba ako?
Uh, we will need to qualify for your honor because we don't have access to sugar.
Baka natakot ka lang dumating si Senate President.
At gusto lang po namin mag-sabi po ng complete po 'yung konteks po, your honor.
And that context, I will allow Mr. Sebastián to butt in if you may, if you can. It has something to do with the reclassification. So there are sugar imports coming in later on would be reclassified. Are you affected by that?
Kung meron pong dumating na asukal po na magagamit po namin, kasi halimbawa po, bottler grade din po siya, then ano po, makakabuti po yun. Makakaoperate po kami ng nasa normal pace, your honor.
We will... Yes, I was about to say that, that I will give my floor to the good Senate President.
Thank you very much. Distinguished colleague, tanggalin na lang natin kasi di yata tayo makikita. Sadong mababa itong kuwan. Nasa firing line kami dito ni Senator Bato. But thank you very much, my dear chairperson, and to my dear colleagues, and of course to the guests that are here today on Coca-Cola. You were here earlier when I spoke. Is that correct, your honor?
Yes, your honor.
Yes. You saw the almost over 100,000 metric tons that were in the bodegas that we showed you earlier under SO three, SO number three?
I saw the pictures, your honor.
That is bottler's grade refined sugar. That is correct? Most of them?
I couldn't tell, your honor.
That's what we were told. It were bottler's grade refined sugar. So is there quandary in your position declaring that there is no supply of sugar as compared to what we showed you as there is a supply of sugar? Is there somebody telling you na wala, pero meron pala? Is that could not be a possibility?
It could be possible, your honor. Assuming po that sugar is there and it's offered to us, it hasn't happened po eh.
That's exactly your point. So as a producer of, I guess you're the biggest consumer of sugar, refined sugar in the country.
Yes, your honor.
You're in a quandary because you have no place to get this sugar. Is that correct?
Yes, your honor. We have tried our best and we are still trying our best and we still don't have access to bottler grade sugar in that amount, your honor.
But obviously, sugar order number three was supposed to correct that. That is supposed to be going to industrial users. Is that correct? Were you been given? Have you been given from sugar order number three?
Mr. Senate President, actually, we got 10,000 metric tons.
That's all? Out of the 200,000 metric tons? Only 10,000 metric tons?
Yes, your honor.
No wonder you're complaining, your honor, Mr. Chairperson. But obviously, the sugar is going somewhere else. So what you're trying to say is, as a standpoint of an industrial user, wala kayong mahanap na asukal. Pero nagulat din po kayo na marami palang asukal. Would that be safe to say?
Your honor, if it were there, we'd be very happy po talaga. Especially if it's at the proper price, we would be very much willing to buy it, your honor.
For my questioning now, if I may, Mr. Chairperson, unless, I will defer to my...
Proceed. With the permission of the Senate President, next question will be Senator Estrada. Thereafter, Senator Padilla has been patiently waiting for the last seven hours.
Oh, I am willing to...
And then Senator De La Rosa and then Senator Bongo.
Yeah, 'yung akin lang kasi po, meron po akong train of questioning that would establish the legality or illegality of sugar order number four. I'm going now to the SRA Administrator. Earlier, Mr. Administrator... Oh, may we administer the oath of office? I mean the oath.
Mr. Secretary, administer natin.
Yes, your honor. Mr. Serafika, yes, your honor.
You can answer, Mr. Serafika. If asked, we will recognize you since you are now familiar with your situation. You're under oath. And of the six senators present here, eight senators would like to question you, including those virtually present. Mr. Senate President, you can proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Senate President.
Mayang-hapon, sir.
Wala pa question, sir.
Mayang-hapon.
Mayang-hapon, sir. Sir, let's just go on the legality first of... Before we discuss SO number three, let's go on SO number four. Let us establish first SO number four. Who drafted sugar order number four, your honor? Was it your office, your honor? Or was it Yusek Sebastián? Who drafted sugar order number four?
I drafted sugar order number four.
You personally drafted sugar order number four?
Me and my staff.
Your technical assistants?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
As I mentioned earlier, and I found out, and you can answer us either yes or no, did you consult with the management of SRA, particularly your deputy administrators on regulation, administration, et cetera, et cetera, on SO number four?
On SO number four, Mr. Chair, I did not consult them. In the past...
Yes, but isn't that...
Any board member, Mr. Chair, can craft a sugar order. There is no rule that only the Regulations Department can endorse a sugar order.
No, in the past, in sugar order number three, you had routed this to the department, your deputy administrators. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the process is that the deputy administrators, after routing, were recommended to the Sugar Regulatory Board.
That's correct.
That's correct. In this case, you did not do that. You drafted it yourself and you had the members of the board sign without the knowledge of the deputy administrators because they already are under oath and they gave it to us timoney earlier.
That's correct.
That's correct. Don't you think this is highly out of order?
May I explain, your honor? In this case, since it was a directive to craft an importation plan, we did not want to let anybody know until such time it will reach the office of the president.
But why did you not want anybody to know? Because, you know, this is a very important matter. You do not import, your honor, with your respect, such a large amount of sugar without consulting the industries involved together with the stakeholders. You just said it now. You do not want anyone to know. What is the secrecy of such a transaction? Your honor, your honor. And we'd like to put this on record that it has not been done. The practice is that you consult your colleagues in the Sugar Regulatory Administration. Okay. Now it is settled.
Mr. Chair, if I may... If I may just be allowed quickly to present just four slides, Mr. Chair. Just so I can present to you the facts behind the issue on SO four, where it is coming from. If you would allow me, it would be of great help for this...
It would be dependent on the chairman.
How many minutes would you present the slides? Is this part of your sworn statement? Or are these new slides not part of our folder?
It's part, Mr. Chair. I think this is very important for everyone to appreciate the facts of...
Can you do that in three minutes?
Well, I'll try my best quickly, Mr. Chair.
Yes, because apparently you can work fast as shown by SO number four. The chair grants the request of the resource person to present some slides. Do we have your USB with us? Thank you. You may proceed, Administrator Serafika.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, sir.
This projected raw sugar supply and demand. This is the data SRA was holding at the crafting of SO four. This was presented to the stakeholders' consultation on July 29, 2022, and submitted to the board for the August 8, 2022 referendum for SO four. Figures as of July 17, 2022 are the projections from the Regulations Department. Estimated production is based on the crop estimate from the RDE Department of SRA at 1.8 million metric tons. Estimated demand is based on actual data from September 2021 to June 2022 and previous crop year data for July and August 2022. The estimated ending balance by August 31 is negative 35,231 metric tons. A comfortable ending stock balance to carry over until production of next crop year picks up at 200,000 metric tons to 250,000 metric tons. Next slide, please. Projected refined sugar supply and demand. This is also the data presented to the stakeholders' consultation on July 29, 2022, and submitted to the board for the August 8, 2022 referendum. Estimated production is based on past three estimate of 15,431,000 bags. Estimated demand is based on actual data for September 2021 to June 2022 and previous year's data for July and August 2022. The estimated ending balance towards August 31 on domestic refined sugar is negative 20,748. But on the imported, the SO three of 2021 and SO three of 2022 totals 150,000 metric tons, totaling 129,251.35 metric tons. Next slide, please. The raw sugar production and demand for the last three crop years. Please take note that the vertical bars represent production. The horizontal lines represent the demand. September production is not sufficient for the demand and barely enough in October. Historically, we need a buffer stack of at least 200,000 metric tons to 250,000 metric tons to carry us through the lean months at the start of the next crop year. To tide us over in September, we need around 170,000 metric tons based on average monthly demand for the last three crop years. Next slide, please. Refined sugar production and demand. This also tells us the three crop years on the historical data. Production... Production, the vertical bars refers to the production. The horizontal lines refers to the demand. Production for September to November is not enough for our demand, thus we need carryover ending balance of at least three months or around 255,000 metric tons with a monthly average of 85,000 metric tons for the last three crop years. Sugar requirement until production becomes sufficient. Raw sugar requirement for... Next slide, please. Sorry. Next slide, please.
Can you wrap it up, Administrator?
Sugar requirement until...
Three minutes is almost up.
Sugar requirement until production becomes sufficient. Raw sugar requirement for one month, month of September, is 170,000 metric tons. Refined sugar requirement for three months, September to November, is 255,000 metric tons. Minus the balance of 129,000 gives us 125,749, plus the 170,000, that gives us 295,749. Hence, we need to import 300,000 metric tons to supply the demand for September to November. Next slide, please.
So you rounded up, Mr. Administrator.
Next slide, please. This is important, Mr. Chair. This is very important. Written recommendations of sugarcane industry stakeholders. Confed, not more than 300,000 metric tons, 150,000 metric tons of raw sugar and 150 tons of refined sugar. NFSP, 300,000 metric tons, 50% for domestic market, 50% for industrial users. ANIFED, 300,000 metric tons, 50% for industrial users, 50% for non-industrial users. Lozon Fed and UNIFED sent a joint resolution. 300,000 metric tons refined only. Only the following traders: All Asian Counter Trade Inc., Amirop Philippines Inc., Sukden Philippines Inc., Edison Lee Marketing Corporation, Oro Aliado Commodities Inc., San Fernando Area Commercial and Skylar Company. PSMA, 300,000 metric tons, 150,000 metric tons of raw and 150 tons of refined. PASRI, 200,000 metric tons, whether raw or refined, decision should be left to the better judgment of parties that will be authorized to import.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. We...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, may I continue my questions?
Let that remain flash on the screen. Let that remain flash on the screen. The Senate President would add something.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I ask him, when was this report made? What exact date was this report made? These slides you're showing us.
This was a consultation...
No, these slides, this all this that was made, was it done a few days ago?
No, Mr. Chair.
When was it made? I'm asking the question. Answer the question. Because the stakeholders that you mentioned there, except for Confed, Your Honor, has disputed this. And they went to see the President and they disputed it. So now my question is, when was this done? Because the position of the SRA two weeks ago, when this all blew up in your face, SO number four, was there was no sugar available. Walang zero sugar. And yet, I will show you. I will point you the slides. Can everybody show the slides of our... The apprehension of the BOC? Maybe just remind the good SR Administrator, maybe replay the pictures of the... That is my question, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. I do not know if he's trying to cover his tracks by justifying Sugar Order Number Four, but clearly we have tens, no, hundreds of thousands of metric tons in bodegas not being utilized. Where are the... Here, I'm showing it now on screen, Your Honor. Mr. Administrator, for you to see. That is not... Hindi bolean. That is all sugar. Bunong bodega. You can't even walk anymore. Of sugar. Coca-Cola, look at that. That is sugar that's supposed to go to you. What were they doing in these container vans? Wasn't that the job of the SRA? To release that sugar for the consumption of the industrial users? And if there is a lack of household consumers, can be reclassified under the instruction of the board? So, obviously, you did not put this in consideration. Because when I'm... When the first, your initial response, Your Honors, of the SRA, there was no sugar. Until I came out with this internal memo from the SRA that there is exactly, to be exact, 126,000 metric tons as of August 12. There was 126,000 metric tons. And we were looking for it. The answer of the SRA at the time of the leadership is... The executive secretary, inutos na 'yung BOC na 'yun. Inutos na 'yung ISAP. Inutos na 'yung PMP. Hanapin ito. Ayan na po. Nahanap na po. Oh, ano po 'yan? Is that hoarding? Sinong may kasalanan 'yan? Bakit hindi niyo pinalabas 'yan? It's just as simple as that. Because the President is being embarrassed because of the high prices of sugar. The SRA says, "There is no sugar. We cannot find any sugar." Here are the bodegas full of sugar. Coca-Cola, these poor guys are no longer selling Coke because they cannot find sugar. There's the sugar, right there. Why is it being hoarded? Why is it not being released to the public? Why is it being kept under lock and key? That is my point. And that is only Sugar Order Number Three. What protection do we have with Sugar Order Number Four? You bring in 300,000 metric tons? Ganun din ang mangyayari dun. Hindi niyo ilalabas. Tataas ang presyo, benta sa publiko. At ang kawawa ang consumer. And of course, since it will flood the market, ang kawawa dyan ang ating mga magsasaka. So, let us go back to SO number four. My question, Your Honors. And I already established, Your Honor, that hindi siya nakipagkonsulta sa kanyang deputy administrators. He admitted on record today that he kept it a secret so that they can speed up the release of the document. Now, is it true that under SO number four, you have the sole authority to reclassify from B to C? Two, because in previous SOs, sugar orders, it was the board. Under SO number four, to just let the gentleman know, what is the reclassification? Very important 'yan. Pagpasok ng imported sugar, Your Honors, please listen to this very important note. It comes in as sea sugar that is reserved. Hindi po magalaw 'yan. The board now will decide to make it B, which is domestic, para mailabas 'yan. The power is vested on the board, okay? Including the secretary or whoever, the acting secretary, the president. But now, under this very document, it was designated to the administrator himself, Your Honor. Now, is that a correct assumption that under SO number four, you have the sole power and authority to reclassify the sugar?
If the board would authorize me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, it is written.
Yes.
SO4, it is clearly written. Don't, 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 let's not mess up the documents. And remember, 8.1, Your Honor, for the immediate availability of the sugar in the market, the SRA Board delegates the administrator the authority to reclassify imported sea sugar to B. But you know, Your Honors, they're already given a delegated authority. They cannot delegate that authority to you. It's a delegated authority to them. So, this is not present in SO number three.
In this case, Mr. Chair, this would expedite the availability of sugar for the local market.
But isn't that a very powerful position to take?
You are not the board.
One person alone?
You are just the mere executor of the board's decision to arrogate upon yourself the powers of the board.
That would have been up to the board if they would have commented on that particular provision on the draft SO, Mr. Chair.
Itun na eh, Your Honor. Signed by everybody.
So meaning, they did not object to the idea of the draft sugar order, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, but then the board has to clarify this because it's a very important and powerful position to be able to be a sole authority reclassifying sugar. There's a price difference and all of this, huh? And it's a very powerful position because then all the traders will go to you and paris classify sila. O anong gusto nilang ipariclassify? Isang tao lamang. Hindi na po 'yung board ang midesisyon nito. Okay, I just want to put that on record. Let us not argue. I want to put on record that in the previous sugar orders, wala ito. Itong Sugar Order Number Four, na unang-una, sikreto pagkagawa, pangalwa, iisa lamang ang magbibigay po, ang binigay ng kapangeryan para magreclassify ng asukal from reserved to domestic use. Very, very important function and of the board. Actually, given to him. Now delegated to him. The other question, Your Honors?
Mr. Chairman, Senator President. Just on your very, very important point, because I'm still really baffled why someone would sign for the President na hindi namang claro na pumapayag. So sabi niyo po, sir, pumayag naman 'yung board na idelegate sa'yo. So ang tanong ko simple lang po, kung iikot mo naman 'yung resolution at may pirma sa ibabaw ng pangalan ng Pangulo na nakapirma, sinong board ang hihindi?
Yun nga, Your Honor.
So dahil akala mo pwede kang pumirma, akala ng board gusto ng presidente na idelegate sa'yo. Tama po ba?
Is that a question for me, Mr. Chair?
Dun po sa pumirma, sir. Ikaw ba 'yung pumirma for the President?
I am not, Mr. Chair.
Kayo po. Yeah, kayo po.
Yes, I signed, Your Honor, but I was the last to sign.
You're the last to sign?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. So, but you made it appear na yun po ang gusto ng Pangulo?
Yes, Your Honor, based on the authority that was given to me last July 15, 2020 and in good faith, Your Honor.
I'll just clarify this. Espidel, nakadugtong talaga sa... Who gave you the authority to sign for the President?
There was a memo issued on July 15, 2022, Your Honor, delegating the authority for me to sit ex-officio in the SRA Board, Your Honor.
Yes. So dapat po, you were signing as ex-officio, not signing for the President. Magkaiba po yun.
Not for the President, Your Honor, for the Secretary of Agriculture and Chair.
Then, ang nakalagay po dito, His Excellency, President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr., SRA Board Chairperson, DA Secretary.
Yes, Your Honor.
You signed on top and then you assigned for.
Yes, Your Honor.
So that doesn't give the impression that you can sign anything for him or your ex-officio. That gives the impression na in this case, pinayagan ka ng Pangulo. So you're saying that that authority gave you a carte blanche na kahit ano, sa SRA pwede mo ipirma ang pangalan ng Pangulo?
No, Your Honor. I reported actually the approval, Your Honor, the following day and it was disapproved by the President.
Yes, you sign first then get approval later on. But you're saying because you had authority to sign. So either you had authority to sign or you did not have authority to sign. And if you had authority to sign as ex-officio, you should have signed as ex-officio. I'll give you an example. If I'm not a member of this committee and the Senate President made me ex-officio member, I will sign as Alankaitano ex-officio member. I could indicate that I was appointed by Senate President Subiri, but I cannot sign Senate President Subiri for and then ako yun. Diba? So I'll leave it there, Mr. President. But balikampu natin 'yan kasi nga, ang inaalala ko, napakasamang Presidento sa buong gobyerno. So yung kayang order ngayon, na walang pasok ngayon, si Pangulo talaga yun or someone again, akala niya, can sign for the President. You see the problem that this brings? I don't know you, Yusek, and I have nothing against you, but for me, this is... Sugar is such a big issue for farmers, pero napakalaking issue din po yung pwedeng pumirma for the President. Pag pumirma ka for the President, ibig sabihin ang Pangulo mismo nagsabi sa'yo na pwede kang pumirma sa pangalan niya. But if it's a delegated authority, you should have signed your name and then said that you are allowed to sign. So I'll leave it there and of course, if you want to respond to that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick question and to one point that I just want to share with everyone. So my next question, Administrator, is... In Sugar Order Number Three, there was a performance bond given to the importers. In Sugar Order Number Four, there was none. Tinanggal niyo ang performance bond, which is supposed to be one of the mechanisms that will protect from unscrupulous importation. Kasi, correct me if I'm wrong, if they import, I think the performance bond was 500 pesos per bag. Pag nagimport 'yan para sa industrial user, hindi dumating sa industrial user, di tanggal 'yung, naconfiscate 'yung bond na 'yun. In this case, Sugar Order Number Four has no performance bond. Why is that so, Administrator?
To lessen additional cost for the consumers because retail prices are already very high, Mr. Chair.
No, but the performance bond, Your Honor, is a return, diba? It is returned to the importer. It's a performance, it's a bond. Once it's imported, distributed, for example Coca-Cola, 100,000 is supposed to, let's say, just to give an example, 100,000 metric tons gonna go to Coca-Cola. The importer of that 100,000 metric tons will pay the performance bond to SRA. Once it delivers to Coca-Cola, you return the performance bond. So what cost is that to the consumer? But that is a protection on your part that they will not pull vault the sugar, which is what's happening now. They're pull vaulting the sugar.
Under existing rules, Mr. Chair, on the monitoring and inspection of SRA, it's not only the performance bond that the Regulations Department is looking at, even the movements and everything on this issue, Mr. Chair.
Yes, but Your Honor, I just showed you. You didn't even know?
Yeah.
All the pictures that I showed you. Maybe ask, maybe ask to mute? Can we mute first all the other players?
Somebody is trying to butt in.
It is so clear as day that even the SRA head does not know about all the sugar that's being stocked up there. So, it would have been better that we would err on the side of caution in terms of government bond or a government protection whatsoever? So that that way, may makuha naman tayo, may punishment sila pag hindi nila naideliver sa desired demand or desired recipients, Your Honor?
In this case, Mr. Chair, the intent was to lessen the additional cost for the consumers because retail prices are already very high. If you will recall, Mr. Chair, the SO4, 300,000, 150,000 of that would go to the industrials. The 150,000 will go to the industrial traders so they can sell it to the consumers and to the household.
My point, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, he just has to answer the question. My point is, there is a standard bond given to importers of sugar under the previous SO sugar order. Na 'yun po tinanggalan 'yan. That means those who are maybe not so large importers, maybe smaller importers, na walang kapital, na ipagbigay ng bond, pwede silang makipaso. Unlike the bigger importers that are, that have a track record, that already deliver to Coca-Cola, Pepsi-Cola, Arsicola and all of them, are just one of the players of many. That can happen because there's no longer a performance bond. Diba? Oh, isn't that disadvantageous to the government? That's supposed to be disadvantageous. I'm just laying out all the, I guess, the anomalies that we see in Sugar Order Number Four. Now, it is on record. I just want to put on record again the haste. Allergic na allergic kami dito sa mga mabibilis na transactions. PSDBM, under the last Congress, found out that there were documents that were given same day, two days after, approved by the back immediately. And this is on record under this committee. We would like to show you that on August 4, 4... August 4, they had a meeting in Malacanyan to come up with an import plan. Import plan lang ito. Tama po? Hindi nila sinabi, magimport kayo. Ang sabi nila, come up with a plan. Just correct me, yes or no? It's an import plan? Unless you tell me otherwise that they told you to import this much? Was it just an import plan?
Yes, to submit as soon as possible an import plan.
Okay. August 4. August 5, nagemail ka na ng draft SO4 import program kay Yusek Sebastian. One day after that. Is that correct? Because these are records.
That's correct.
That's correct. So one day, import plan palang 'yan. Don't you think the import plan should detail meeting with stakeholders? All the farmers groups and the end users? But I just want to put on record how quick this was done. August 4, import plan? Hindi naman sinasabi na magimport kayo. Magplano lang kung gaano karami. August 5, meron ka ng planong importation order na binigay kay Secretary Sebastian. August 6 and 7 was a weekend. August 8, pinaprobmo through a referendum with the members of the board. Is that correct? August 8?
I asked guidance from Undersecretary Sebastian on August 8 in the morning on how to move forward, seeing the urgency on the matter.
Okay. August 9, Your Honors, I just want to put this on record. Tabos na ang board resolution for SO4. Apat na araw. Apat na araw for such an important, important document for importation. Don't you think that is highly irregular? It is not common. How long did it take for SO3 to come out?
It was quick, Mr. Chair.
As quick as this?
It was even quicker than this because of the urgency.
SO3?
Yes.
Yes, and that's why you had two RTC cases? Because the stakeholders did not know anything about it and the regional trial courts? And yet you continued with your importation?
Mr. Chair, if I may, there was also consultation. If I remember way back January 20, 2022. We do not do all these things, Mr. Chair, without consultation.
But again, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman, I would like to put the groups that went to see the President had said that they were not consulted on this SO number four. How can you have done the consultation? August 4, kay nag-meeting. August 5, dinavto na. Oh, how did you consult within that day, Your Honor?
They submitted documents, written documents, Your Honor.
Well, they are here, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. Chair. The stakeholders are there who were willing to be on record to either refute or confirm the gentleman's statement. My point, and that's it. My last point is, SO4, for me, is highly irregular. As already mentioned by Malacanyan, it is illegal. Unfortunately, there is malfeasance, misfeasance, usurpation of authority. I think it is in the realm, within the realm of this committee to make the necessary, of course, determination of this. And again, moving forward, I hope and pray that the SRA will do it differently next time. That with due respect to you, Administrator, you know, going, looking and finishing my statement. I saw the list there. I saw the numbers. You're saying at 2 November, we need to come up with an importation for November. I beg to disagree because Negroes is already harvesting now. You are from Leyte. You're from Leyte. I'm from Negroes and Bukinon. I know for a fact Victorious is already harvesting. La Carlota and several other sugar mills have already started. They're claiming that by end of September, October, there is already sugar in the bodegas to be distributed all over. They refu- They're refusing your claim that there will be no sugar until November. So, Your Honors, that is very important that there should be a mechanism that the stakeholders are involved when it comes to importation. Yan po ang pangako namin, pangako ko po 'yan, I'm not, this was my promise in the campaign. Alam po ni Senator Estrada, and we were together on stage, together with Senator Padilla, and in unity. Unahin namin, protektahan ang ating sariling mga magsasaka. Ubusin natin ang kanilang produkto bago tayo magimport sa labas. Yun po, Mr. Chairman, and I hope this committee can act swiftly on this issue. Maraming, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. President. We assure you that we will act swiftly with the permission of Senator Padilla. Nahihiya na po kay Senator Padilla, pitong oras na dito. Nakiusap po muli si Senator Jinguoy, isang tanong lang daw siya. Pakatapos si Senator Padilla na. Senator Estrada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with the indulgence of Senator Robin Hood, Padilla. I would like to ask some questions, propose some questions to the former Administrator, Administrator Sarafika. So you are the mastermind of SO Number Four?
I endorse that to the Sugar Board, Mr. Chair.
You were the one who drafted SO Number Four?
Yes.
Sumakatui, ediko ang mastermind. Anyway, before you drafted this Sugar Order Number Four, you never consulted any stakeholders, am I right?
We did, Mr. Chair.
How long? And when did you talk with the stakeholders concerned? And who among the stakeholders concerned did you discuss SO Number Four?
We met via online, Your Honor, and these are the following stakeholders that were in attendance. And they also wrote the recommendations by way of a written recommendation. Number one, Confed.
When was this?
It was conducted online, Mr. Chair.
When?
July 29th.
July 29th?
Yes.
Okay.
Confed sent a letter signed by Mr. Raymond Montinola. National Federation of Sugar cane planters, signed by its president Enrique Rojas. Panifed, signed by its president Danilo Abilita.
How many stakeholders are there in the sugar industry?
There are five federations, Mr. Chair, the two millers and one refiner.
How many consultant?
All of, almost all of them, Mr. Chair. Yes.
Mr. Chair, if we may, later after the good gentleman speaks on that, we ask also the stakeholders online. I saw UniFed had Lamata and also that they can, it can be clarified, it's not coming only from the voice of the gentleman.
If they're virtually present.
Maybe we can ask them if they were consulted?
The gentleman can finish his question.
Okay. Can we ask him first if he was consulted?
Mr. Lamata, can you hear us, sir?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The question of Senator Estrada is that where you consulted as alleged by the Administrator here?
Good afternoon, Senator Torretino. We were made to believe po that the president ordered importation of 300, they wanted the importation of 300,000 metric tons because it was a national emergency. So we signed, we signed because who are we to question the wisdom of the president? But we signed all refined. What happened, Po, when SO4 was made, half was raw or brown, half was refined. We never signed for that, Your Honors. We can never allow brown sugar to be imported because Negros is already milling. If that comes down to Negros, atay ang mga planters namin po, bagsak and presyo. We will never allow that. At SO4, SO4 po, raming anomaly. Yung isa po, if I may get my notes.
Before, before you proceed, Mr. Lamata, I think the Senate President or Senator Estrada would like to...
So they were made to believe that it was upon the instructions of the president?
That is correct, Po. That SO3 and SO4 both, we were made to believe that the president wanted the importation.
But there was no real shortage of sugar, am I correct?
Eyon na po, eto siya, si Mr. Sarafika, wak-wak na wak-wak, na wala na daw asukal, wala naman siya nagpa-survey. Ilang beses na po, I wrote him four, five times, you make a national survey. That is the job of the SRA, which was done in past administrations. How can he have a justification of numbers?
Mr. Lamata, can you please refrain from continuing?
Thank you, Mr.?
You're in a committee hearing, you refrain from using language that will offend the senses of this committee, wak-wak, et cetera, et cetera. Say, say it in a direct Webster English, Mr. Lamata. What do you mean by wak-wak?
Pasensya na po, pasensya na po.
Go ahead, go ahead, but we understand you.
Thank you, Po. Mr. Sarafika has been giving us numbers when he has never made a survey of any mill or any bodega in the past administration, Po, the Galang Senators. SRA used to make three surveys in one year, before the start of milling, middle of milling, and after milling. Then you can make an exact data how much is required by the country and the consumption to import or not to import. Eto siya po, never has he made a survey. So how can he say and justify that there is a shortage? When you go, Po, to the Palenques, there is sugar. Yon lang sobra mahal, and we do not agree with that price neither because all our sugars, Po, is being bought by the traders from us at Millgate at 40 pesos po per kilo. And we do not agree to be that the sugar is being sold in the Palenques at 100, sobra, sobra na yan, Po.
Thank you, Mr. Lamata. Mr. Sarafika, before you drafted this SO Number Four, you never inspected any warehouses? You never surveyed any warehouses of sugar?
That is a regular activity of the Regulations Department to monitor movements of sugar, Mr. Chair. And I would like to request the committee to answer on the survey being undertaken by the SRA. Deputy Administrator Tahida is here to make this clear to the community, to the committee because there are internal procedure of SRA, Mr. Chair.
Wait, okay. According to the Senate President, you did this in haste, okay? Why can't you wait for the approval of the president, who is concurrently the acting secretary of the Department of Agriculture?
Your Honor, it was not done in haste. It was submitted to the board for referendum, and I voted first.
So you are refuting these statements made by the Senate President?
I am just stating facts, Your Honor. That was what happened. After me, former board member Beltran manifested his vote. And the following day, former board member Valderama casted his vote as well.
May I just make a really quick manifestation? I had the chance to speak with former board member Beltran, and he was told me, because he's from Bukinnon. And he told me, Sen. Miggs, I was made to believe that the president insisted on disimportation. Same as the sugar federations. Somebody's mouthing out saying that it is the president who wants this, but it's not true.
That was the reason they, they signed your, they signed this, ano? Am I correct? Because they were made to believe that it was the instruction by the president himself. But anyway, we have received information that you have already sold or allotted to some notorious applicants a sugar allocation even before the issuance of SO Number Four. How true is this?
That's not true, Your Honor.
Are you sure?
That's not true. I swear to that.
How long have you been working with the SRA?
I was appointed by former President Duterte as board member way back 2016. And when the Administratorship's office was vacated by the former Administrator, I was appointed on September 2017 as Administrator by former President Duterte.
Okay. My last question, is your authority given by the board to convert Class C sugar to Class B sugar been approved by the president as the DA Secretary?
Sorry, again, your question, Mr. Chair.
Is your authority given by the board to convert Class C sugar to Class B sugar has been approved by the president or as a, as the current Secretary of the Department of Agriculture?
It was, it was approved through the referendum, Your Honor.
But by the president or by the Secretary of the DA?
It was signed by the three of us.
I am asking you, the president, did he give you authority?
The president does not give me authority, Your Honor.
Has it been approved by the president?
It is the majority of the members of the board that cast their vote.
As the DA Secretary, has it been approved by the president?
Is that question directed to me, Mr. Chair?
It's directed to you. Ang tanong ni Senator Estrada, the president being the concurrent DA Secretary.
Undersecretary Sebastian signed for that approval, Mr. Chair.
Ang tinatanong ko po kung ang presidente bilang kalihem ng Department of Agriculture, kung inaprobahan ba niya 'yung pag-convert ng Class C sugar to Class B sugar.
Napirmahan po ni Yusek Sebastian, so I would assume approved po yon ni presidente.
Ang tanong po ni Senator Estrada ganito, 'yung pagbibigay sa inyo ng kapangyarihan to act as the SRA board itself. You solely would be violative of Republic Act 10659, the Sidal of 2015, and glaringly, Section 4 of Executive Order Number 18, referring to the corporate powers of the board. Because you cannot, you cannot function as the entire board. You are just the administrator of the SRA. Yun siguro 'yung tinatanong ni Senator Estrada. Has this been validated through an action coming from the current DA Secretary? So wala, wala po yon. Kahit anong pa, ligoy-ligoy natin, wala po yon. Senator Estrada, I think...
Yes, I have only promised around two to three questions. I yield the floor to Senator Padilla. But I reserve my right to pose questions in the next hearing.
Senator Padilla, you have the floor. You've been waiting patiently for seven hours.
Maraming salamat po, Chairman. Gusto ko lamang pong batihin 'yung ating mga bisita. Ako po'y hanga sa pag-resign ninyo. Sapagkat bihira po 'yan sa gobyerno natin, kapag may galitong usapin, ayaw mag-resign, nakakapito ko. Pero kayo po ay nag-resign. Ngayon, ang, di ko lamang po maintindihan, kasi kanina pa po ako, sabi nga po ng ating chairman, kanina pa po ako nakikinig. Parang tuwing may babato, nakasangga po kayo eh, talagang matindi ang pagsangga. Para po sa akin, sa binabasa ko po rito, sapat na 'yung sinabi ng ating press secretary na sinabi po niya na, eto po ah, basahin ko po ah. The chairman of the Sugar Regulatory Board is President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. As such chairman, he sets the date of any meetings and convening, convening of the Sugar Regulatory Board and its agenda. No such meeting was authorized by the president, nor such a resolution likewise was not authorized. Ngayon, dito namang po sa sumunod, sinabi po dito na tinatanggap po ni Sir Sebastian ang responsibility. Ang una ko pong tanong, nararamdaman niyo namang po siguro 'yung bigat ngayon ng sitwasyon? Hindi po ba nababago 'yung inyong sinabi? Yung po ba, eh, panghahawakan pa rin po namin na kayo po ang tumatanggap ng responsibilidad na ito? Kung ano man po, saan man po mapunta ito, kung dalin man po ito sa kaso, at ito po ay makarating sa judiciary, tinatanggap niyo po?
Chair, I resign for Delicadessa and to swear the president from these issues that may arise, Your Honor. So, sorry, I offered to sign.
Opo, opo, ako, bilib po ako dun, saludo po ako dun. Yung pong tanong ko po, handa po kayong, kayo lahat ng umani nito? Kasi nakita niyo namang po, ang aking ginoong pangulo ay talagang pinaglalaban ng ating, alam niyo po kasi, usapin po ito ng magsasaka. Bago po ito napunta sa importasyon, gusto ko din pong liwanagin sa ating mga kababayan. Ang, ang inyong pong ubisina ay hindi lamang po patungkol sa importasyon. Kayo din po ay nasa exportasyon, hindi lang natin magawa yan. Sapagkat hindi ko po din malaman kung bakit. Ito pong importasyon neto, hindi, hindi po ito 'yung mandato lang lamang ninyo. Kailangan po ito maintindihan din ng mga kababayan natin, no po? Ang gusto ko po lang marinig, handa po ba nyong tanggapin lahat ito, ginoong Sebastian? Na kayo po ang haharap sa korte, kayo po ang magbubuhat nito.
Sir, Mr. Your Honor, I am accountable and responsible for my actions, Your Honor.
Opo, opo po 'yan, tatanggapin ko po 'yan na opo.
Yes, Your Honor.
Opo, maraming salamat po. Pwede pa po bang isa pang tanong? Pwede pa po ba? Tapos na po ba 'yung limang minuto ko? Okay.
Senator Padilla, since you waited for seven hours, we are now giving you seven minutes.
Ayon, maraming salamat po. Yung sundan ko lamang po 'yung sinabi ng ating ginoong pangulo. Ayon po sa datos na nabanggit ni Senate President sa kanyang privileged speech, ang mga magsasaka po at manggagawa sa sugar industry, ang isa sa pinakamahirap sa lipunan. Sila ay kumikita lamang ng 30,000 kada buwan, 2,500. At kada taon po yun ah, 'yung 30,000, 2,500 kada buwan, o 82 pesos kada araw. Tama po ba na kasama po sa mandato po ninyo ang pangangalaga sa mga magsasaka, sa usapin ng sugar, sa asukal?
For me, Your Honor, or for SRA?
Ah, para po sa inyo po 'yan, sa inyo po lahat, sa lahat po ng nasare, SRA. Dahil ang pagkakaalam ko po, ang SRA po ay kasama po ninyo ang paglinang ng sugar industry sa bansa. Katunayan, dito po sa inyong gaa, nakalagay po dito, may budget po ang SRA na 712 million para sa mga sumusunod, construction of farm-to-mill roads, block farm program, socialized credit, scholarship. Ito po ba eh na isasagawa po ng inyong ubisina? Kasi natandaan po ninyo, ano, ang linaw po ng sinabi ng ginoong pangulo, ang pinoproteksyonan po niya dito una sa lahat 'yung ating magsasaka. Gusto ko lamang pong malamang kung saan po napunta itong 712 million. 300, eh, ito po, ano, hati-hatiin ko, sa construction po ng farm-to-mill, 356 million. Block farm program, 213 million. Socialized credit, 106 million. Scholarship, 35 million. Sino po ang pwedeng sumagot po sa inyo, kung saan, ano po nangyari dito sa mga ito? Ito po ba na implement? Ito po ba napakinabangan ng ating mga magsasaka?
Your Honor, some of those projects are ongoing?
Pag sinabi niyo pong ongoing, meron po ba kayong pwedeng ipakitan sa amin na datos nito?
Your Honor, at this point, na wala na po ako sa SRA, pwede po siguro kung...
Pero panahumponin niyo ito, sir?
Yes, po. So para sa update lang po, Your Honor, kung matulungan po ng committee para ma-direct 'yung management ng SRA, para ma-update 'yung, 'yung sinasabi mo po na 712 million, kung ano ang breakdown at saka ano na po ang status.
Meron po bang output? Ano pong output nito? Meron po bang nadagdag na... Meron po bang nadagdag na pwede tayong anihin?
Eh, ito...
Kasi pag-budget po ang pinag-usapan, sir, kailangan may output po, di ba po?
Ah, tama po. So hindi ko lang mapreamp 'yung report, official report ng SRA.
Masasabi po natin na medyo wala pong output sapagkat nag-iimport po tayo?
Hindi naman po, kasi ito ay... These are the five, lima po ito na programa under SIDA law 10659. Ang kalahati po ng budget nito ay pupunta po sa FMR. Ibig sabihin, 'yung kalsada po. 'Yung 15% pupunta po sa block farm. Ito po 'yung centerpiece ng SIDA law, 'yung block farm.
Meron po bang nagawang kalsada?
Marami na po, marami na po. Habang haba na po ang naparatingan ng SIDA law. Yan ang malaking tulong ni Senator Bilyar po at saka ni Senate President Zubiri dito sa sugar industry.
Nung nakaraang dalawang taon po, meron pong mga ulat ang Commission on Audit tungkol sa mga unliquidated amount at account receivables para sa pagbili ng mga tractor-driven sugar cane harvester, cutter para sa mga sugar cane farmers. Maari po bang malaman kung ito po ba ay natapos itong mga programa nito? At 'yung mga biniling kagamitan po ba ay naipamahagi sa mga benepisionario?
Your Honor, minabuti ko po 'yung panahon ng pandemic. Hanggang December 2021, naitapos na po 'yung procurement sa PITC. So itong five months ng 2022, naubos na po pag-deliver ang lahat po ng mga makinaryas para po sa magsasaka.
Nabanggit po 'yung PITC, ano pong ibig niyo pong sabihin? Itinanover niyo sa kanila?
Hindi po. Ang nangyari kasi, Your Honor, nung 2019...
2020 po ito?
Yeah, 2019 po kasi inapprove po ng board na ipamahagi sa PITC ang procurement po ng...
Sila po ang bibili?
Sila ang magbibiding, tapos sila po ang magbayad kung sino man ang mananalo, tapos 'yung suppliers po ang mag...
Kaya madaling salita, nakarating po?
Nakarating na po. Yun ang sinabi ko sa inyo na hanggang Juny po itong taon na'to, natapos po ang...
Lahat po ito?
Lahat po.
Ibig pong sabihin, itong sinabi ng Commission on Audit eh, hindi na po natin ito papansinin?
Siguro po, mas maganda po para galing oficial na komunikasyon po ng SRA para po official din po nga talagang wala na yang issue sa kuha po para...
Chairman, Chairman, Chairman...
Senator Bilyar trying to...
Yes, after...
With the permission of Senator Padilla? Yes, after the questioning of Senator Padilla, we will recognize Senator Bilyar.
Ah, sorry po, ma'am Senator Bilyar, sorry po. Chairman, sorry po ah. Ah, tapusin ko lang po. Masasabi po natin na babaliwala ko na po ito, itong Commission on Audit neto.
Again, siguro mas maganda nga mayroong bagong update from SRA para po yun ang official. Kasi ito, ito ngayon hindi na ako, hindi na ako connected sa SRA, mahirap. So ayaw kong ipreamp ano 'yung official nga sulat na maipadala po sa committee.
Gusto ko lamang po din ipaalala sa kung sino man po ang nakaupo dyan sa SRA na ang mandato po ninyo, unahin po natin ang katulad po ng sinabi ng ginoong pangulo, 'yung umpong kapakanan ng ating magsasaka. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Padilla. Next question, I see the hand of, it's either the minority leader or Senator Cayetano. Ah, Senator Bilyar, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. A quick manifestation coming from the co-chair. Senator Bilyar is recognized.
I just want to clarify to Mr. Serafika na hindi ba yang PITC pinaimbestigahan na natin 'yan? Kasi ginagawa nila yang parking lot ng kanila mga budget, tapos hindi naman nila ini-implement. Diba nag-investigate tayo stensibly sa PITC? Nagtataka lang ako, why ang SRA dadalhin nila ang pera sa PITC? At ba't hindi sila mag-implement nung project? Ano ba meron dyan sa PITC na tuwang-tuwa sila dadalhin dyan ng lahat ang pera ng gobyerno? I just want Mr. Serafika to answer that.
Mr. Serafika, please answer.
During the time, Your Honor, I objected to the idea of SRA having a memorandum of agreement to PITC. I was outvoted then during the time, and hence it was transferred to PITC. And that was almost 600 million, Your Honor. But itong procurement...
I cannot believe that na i-outvote ka nung mga ano mo. Sino, tatlo lang kayo, diba?
Yes, tatlo lang po kami.
Tatlo lang kayo, and kilala ko 'yung tatlo na yun. Di mo namang binibigyan ng sayo yun eh, reklamo nga na reklamo yun eh.
During the time...
Talaga namang nag-a-underspending na kayo eh. 2 billion ang inilagay sa batas eh, hindi niyo ini-spend eh. Tapos eh, nung mag-i-spend kayo, dadalhin niyo pa sa PITC na noon na inimbestigahan niyang kasi meron ginagawang parking lot 'yan ng mga pera niyo na hindi niyo naman ini-implement. Hindi lang ikaw, kataku-takot na agency ng government. And then, bakit niyo dinadala dyan? Hindi niyo implement, ano 'yan? Kumikita kayo sa interes ng pera habang hindi niyo ini-implement? Bakit hindi niyo implement sa sarili niyo 'yung mga project niyo?
After what happened with PITC, Your Honor, all the procurement were all undertaken by SRA back and our back offices, Your Honor.
Nag-file ako ng resolution 2018, 2019 dahil noon from 2016 na nagbigay kami ng budget sa inyong 2 billion. Hindi niyo naman itinutulong sa mga farmer eh. Lahat eh, underspending eh. Kaya binagsak ng binagsak ng DBM, 'yung budget niyo eh. Hindi niyo naman tinutulungan ang farmer. Parang ang ginagawa niyo lang, interesadong-interesado kayo sa, ano tawag dito, importation. Hindi niyo ginagawa 'yung trabaho niyo, natulungan niyo, i-develop ang ating mga farmers para nun sa ganon, ma-produce nila 'yung sugar at a lower price at a bigger quantity like giving them machine, giving them financial assistance, developing the block farm. Puro hindi niyo ginawa yun eh. And minsan lang kayong tutulong, dinala niyo pa sa PITC. Is this the way you're going to do your job? And then ngayon, pag importation, excited the excited kayo? So tama nga sinasabi nila na kayo eh, Department of Importation, hindi kayo developmental yang Department of Agriculture. Yun lang po, I want to make that manifestation.
We take note of that, Senator Bilyar. You may not reply, Administrator Serafika, because we will have another round next week. I am serving notice that we will be inviting you next week. I'm sure you will be here, just as you volunteered to be here despite the circumstances surrounding your late arrival. So we'll be inviting you. You did not answer?
Mr. Chair, quick, quick manifestation.
This will be the order to finalize this because we have to convene the plenary as per directive of Senator Zubiri. The quick manifestation of Senator De La Rosa, the five-minute questioning of Senator Cayetano based on the order of arrival, and the minority leader will be given the chance to ask questions likewise. Thereafter, we will suspend. The other resource persons not questioned. I know how important your time is. We will be asking you next week. We all know that you have volunteered to be here in the interest of the nation's farmers as well as the sugar industry. We hope to see you again. Senator De La Rosa is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to move that PITC will be invited in the succeeding hearing, Mr. Chair. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Secretaries have directed to invite PITC as well as the Bureau of Customs as requested by Senator Tulfo a while ago. Senator Cayetano is recognized for his five-minute...
Thank you.
...questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we will give up our reservation of the plenary next week so that you can continue there, given the interest on this issue and given it's so important. I hope Yusek Sebastian and Administrator Serafika realizes hindi ito simpleng bagay lang eh. I mean, hindi lang 'yung industriya ang nayug-yug dito, no? Ang consumers natin, buong Pilipinas, no? Hirap na hirap na sa COVID, hirap na hirap na sa pagtaas ng presyo, tapos nabulaga dito sa asukal. So first question lang, kasi I want to pursue the point that there seems to be a recurring theme that someone or some people gave the impression that the president wants this. Meron po bang board member o Yusek na Marites ang pangalan sa SRA?
Anybody from SRA, Yusek, Mr. Serafika?
May I have your question again, Your Honor?
Meron po bang board member o officialis na Marites sa inyo?
Sa SRA, I do not know anyone of Marites na member ng board.
Sa DA po, may Yusek ba o Asek na Marites?
None, Your Honor.
Eh bakit kumalat 'yung chismis na gusto to ng presidente? Sino ang Marites sa inyo? May we ask Mr. President? I don't want to put the industry in hot water, no? But grabe na pinagdadaan na nila. Nasabi po ng presidente nila kanina, Mr. Chairman, na they were given the impression. Can I ask him lang, anong circumstance did when they were called? Sinabi ba na gusto ni presidente to or what? Let's get to the bottom of that because it's not only one or two people who have said here in this hearing na nagkakaroon ng, ano, ng impression na gusto ng presidente, kaya sumunod na lang 'yung iba?
Are you referring that question to Mr. Serafika or to Mr. Lamata?
Lamata.
Mr. Lamata, are you still there, virtually?
Yes po, yes po.
Sir, you heard the question, you can reply.
Yes po.
Sir, how did you get that impression, sir?
Well, we were told, we were told by SRA individuals, all our members, we were told that this is a national emergency because of the high prices on retail. We are there, the president therefore ordered that 300,000 metric tons should be imported to the country ASAP without further ado. And who are we to question the wisdom of the president? So we signed, we signed, and we sent in a resolution that we are agreeable for 300,000 refined. What came out in the SO4, Mr. Senator, kakalahati 150 raw, 150 refined. 'Yung roo po, it will come on November, and we are already milling. Patay 'yung industriya, Mr. Senator. Tinong kikinabang dyan? Tatlo or apat lang na may mga refineries. Kilala po ang kikinabang dyan, patay ang buong planters, and the consumers will still be problematic. So mali yun.
So sir, when you said people from SRA, this is more than one person, no?
Yes po. Kasi pinakalat nila eh, pinakalat nila sa lahat na this is, these are orders of the president. So yun po, 'yung SO3 and SO4, the same, orders of the president daw.
Do you recall one or two of the highest position who said the same thing? For example, sir, did Administrator Serafika, was he one of those or hindi po?
Yes po. Kasi he talks to his friendly federations, nag-uusap-usap sila. Eh 'yung mga friendly federations po, may mga connection din sa amin mga federasyon. So yun, talk of the town na yan po.
So last question, sir. So nung nakita niyo 'yung order number four at nakapirma for the president, it bolstered your, or it affirmed your ditok, no, na gusto ng presidente to? Kasi it was signed for President Ferdinand Marcos Jr., tama po ba?
Tama po, sir, tama po. But we were shocked to believe na illegal pala.
Yes. So going back, Administrator, have you been telling people na gusto ng presidente to?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I never said those. What we discussed during the stakeholders meeting were numbers, were data coming from the SRA.
Okay.
And the shortfall of the raw and refined sugar.
Sige po. That's why I'm giving a chance to answer that. But if we go deeper, marami naman tao ang involved dito, as the Senate President said. Isang SRA member mismo, yun din ang sinabi, that he was given the impression, no? So before I go back to the signature, kanina po, sir, sabi niyo, kaya tinanggal 'yung performance bond para to lessen the burden on the consumers. How will it lessen the burden on the consumers? At hindi namang po ang consumers ang nagbabayad ng performance bond. Hindi namang po bababa ang presyo at hindi rin namang po babagal 'yung importation, hindi po ba?
Your Honor, siyempre, ipapatong nila yun sa cost nila ng sugar nila pagdating ng puwerto at saka siyempre...
Sir, why would, bakit nila ipapatong eh hindi namang po to expense? Pagka na-perform, makukuha nila pabalik, hindi po ba?
Yes po.
So kaya nga may SRA para sabihin din sa kanila kung anong pwede nilang ipatong at hindi, hindi po ba? Binabantayan niyo rin po 'yung presyo, hindi po ba? Is that correct?
We just monitor prices, Your Honor.
Yes, but part of monitoring, it is not a passive monitoring, no? It's like in the Bible when you say you wait on the Lord, you wait on Jesus, that's hupomeno, diba? That's actively waiting for them. When you monitor, it's not just for the sake to say, oy, 80 pesos na pala, 90 pesos. It's also para mag-comment kayo kung unjustified 'yung taas ng presyo, hindi po ba?
Tama po, Your Honor.
Meaning there is no reason to remove the performance bond because it should not have been added to the price anyway. It's, kung sa'yo sabi niyo, sir, may tinanggal kayong tax, may tinanggal kayong fee, may tinanggal kayong, let's say, kailangan ilagay sa warehouse 'yan ng isang araw, diba? 'Yang mga 'yan, mababawasan talaga presyo. Pero ang performance bond, pag tinanggal mo, wala dapat epekto sa presyo 'yan.
More often than not, in this case, that retail prices are already very high, Your Honor. We anticipate that the traders will really take advantage of the situation, Your Honor.
Well, let's leave it there, no? Because we can all give our reasons, but this is the first time I heard na ang performance bond would add a cost, no? So next, sir, ang sabi po sa inyo, denelegate sa inyo ng board?
Yes. Senator Coco Pimentel is waiting likewise.
I apologize to my colleague.
I love a plenary.
Sige po.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Sabi niyo po, kaya denelegate sa inyo ang reclassification kasi kailangan mabilis kumilos, tama po ba?
Tama po.
Okay, etatlong araw lang namang kumilos 'yung board eh. So gaano kabiles pa gusto nung board kumilos ka? Isang minuto, limang minuto? Usually, dine-delegate 'yan, halimbawa, ng board of, ng isang kumpanya sa CEO, kuntingin nila every quarter pa kasi magme-meeting ang board or every month 'yung board, that's why. But even then, they don't usually delegate it to the CEO, they delegate it to a executive committee. So hindi ko po maintindihan bakit po ibibigay sa inyo kung mabilis naman ang board niyo?
Only on extremely urgent situation like in this case that we will, we are in a shortage of sugar and very extremely high price.
Sir, wala na akong time ah, so tatanungin ko lang, wala kayong Viber o WhatsApp?
I have.
So hindi kayo pwedeng may Viber group sa board pag urgent at i-approved pa rin ang board? So anyway, I'll leave it there, Mr. Chair, because nga, we have two colleagues na nandito pa, but may also reserve some time later on, and we'll look deeper into it. My concern, Mr. Chair, is that we have hundreds of GOCs and they are watching this. And sa good practices nila, walang problema, pero sa practices ng ganito, napakahirap po. Baka maubos oras natin sa kakaimbestiga. So thank you to the gentleman for answering the question.
Thank you, Senator Cayetano. Senator Cayetano just reminded me, committee secretary, that you have to invite likewise the Office of the Government Corporate Counsel for the next hearing. Recognize the arrival of Senator Amy Marcos. Senator Coco Pimentel, the minority leader, you have five minutes before we suspend, and thereafter, we will proceed to the plenary. Senator Pimentel, you have the floor.
I'm ready to give way to the lady senator if you want to ask questions.
Yes, I think many of the points have already been expounded quite thoroughly. I'd just like to request that in the following hearing, the new officials of the SRA please be present so that we know what the steps are moving forward. Thank you, Senator Pimentel. Thank you, Senator Pimentel, and the chairman.
Senator, the Senate, the Committee Secretary is likewise directed to invite the newly appointed members of the SRA board. Senator Pimentel, please proceed.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Naging controversial po 'tong ating sugar order number four because 'yung, iba nga, 'yung lack of authority, iba, alisin natin yun, but even 'yung sa quantity of the sugar that the board wanted to, or wanted to allow to be imported, 300,000 metric tons. Now, tell me if what I've read is correct, that the president has allowed the importation of 150,000 metric tons. Is that correct, as far as you know, Administrator Serapika?
I do not know, Your Honor.
So, saan ko nabasa yun? Yusek Sebastian, nabasa mo ba yun, or nabalitaan mo?
Yes, Your Honor, that is in the news, that the president is proposing 150,000 metric tons for importation.
Ang gusto ko sabihin, so the decision of the, ilan kayong tao nun who signed SO4? Tatlo lang ba kayo?
We are three, Your Honor.
You're after the four. You're after the four, because Yusek Sebastian signed on behalf of the president. So, in effect, the basic decision to import sugar has been confirmed by the president in his decision to import sugar. Correct or not correct? Yusek or an admin, sino pong, kayo, any of the four who signed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Correct, diba? Except that, 'yung SO4 ninyo could be criticized for allowing too much importation. Ganun lang, so ang tanong ko, aside from the authority, sawag na muna 'yung lack of authority, kasi may mga memo circular 'yan, a-analyze pa natin 'yan. Pero tanong ko sa inyo, matagal na kayong nasa SRA admin na 2016. You said, how about the others? Attorney Beltran, matagal na rin po ba, as far as you know?
2016.
2016, how about Mr. Valderama, as far as you know?
Recently, he was appointed August 2 only.
August 2, huh. Okay, but definitely you have some expertise on sugar matters. How about you, Yusek Sebastian? You're just the representative of the president in the SRA, but are you familiar or can be considered an expert on sugar matters?
No, Your Honor, I'm not an expert on sugar matters.
So ito si, ito si admin Serapika, kayo po ang ano dito. What led you to that number, the 300,000 metric tons?
Your Honor, these are based on data. The SRA is the repository of all records of the production of all mills and refineries. On a weekly basis, they are transmitted to the SRA by way of SMS, and these are calculated also on a weekly basis. And from there, we can do projections on what happens on every particular issue. And in this case, Your Honor, the shortage, we are just even putting it on the minimal based on the three-year average monthly demand of the raw sugar at 170,000 metric tons. Now, with regards to the refined sugar, taking into consideration the balances for SO3, it will come out almost just 100 something that will total to 300,000 metric tons. That is just to walk us through for three months based on at 85,000 metric tons per month consumption on refined sugar.
So you do not plan it up to December 31 of a calendar year? Hindi pa yun, so hindi pa ending, sa mata ninyo, hindi pa palal, ending 'yung SO4, pwede pa magkaroon ng SO5?
Yes, most likely, because we base our data, like for example, sugarcane farming or plantation, Your Honor, is very dependent on climate. In fact, Bukidnon is always our balancing factor, but this time around, because of the cloud cover in Bukidnon, there was not much solar radiation to the sugarcane fields. That's why this time also, the production in Bukidnon is also lower than expected.
Okay, so you use data. Ngayon, ito, the recent decision of the president himself to authorize the importation of 150,000 metric tons. Hindi ko pala malalaman detail niyan kung refined sugar yun or raw sugar yun, or what kind of sugar yun. What data? Now, what data do you think supported this new figure, lesser figure of 150,000 metric tons?
With your respect to the president, Your Honor, I have no idea.
Yusek, what do you think? Where did the president get his data? Or where did his advisors get their data to come up with a different? Pero 'yung decision to import, pareho kayo eh. Ano, confirm eh, but sa quantity lang po tayo nagkaiba, kakalahati. So, ang gusto ko sabihin, had you, had you decided in SO4 to import 150,000 metric tons, baka walang issue. Kasi after the, after the issue, ang decision is to import 150,000 metric tons. Well, where do you think that figure came from?
No personal...
No, no theories, no theories, no, 150,000 metric tons. So, who do you think should be invited in the next hearing so that we can? Kasi ganito, point two, I want to go through your decision-making process, what's going on in your mind, and then it ran. The president in coming up with the decision, I know what went through his mind. Because, baka meron tayong data diyan na unreliable na po, may be bloated, baka bloated po 'yung ating... How do you compute, sir, the demand for sugar, for the different kinds of sugar in the domestic market? How is that computed?
Actually, sir, putting it simply, this is the data of PSA and the DA. 50% of our total production goes to the industrials. Yes, the balance of 50% is broken into 32% goes to the households, and 18% goes to the institutional sector, meaning hotel, hospitals, and restaurants.
We have that, Senator Minority Leader, we have that in the files where the division of the sugar would go. But just to remind the gentleman that in one minute, we have to convene the plenary.
So maybe I can, I can suspend, Mr. Chairman, but be allowed to...
Yes, you will be the first.
Yeah.
You will be the first when we resume hearing on Tuesday.
Siguro, last word ko lang, you're giving us the, parang, the distribution of the harvest eh. But actually, mag- the question of is the number, diba? The consumption. Tama pa rin yun, 50, 32, 18, pero what is now the consumption? So to be continued, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you to the good minority leader. And to repeat what the chair mentioned a while ago, we will suspend, and then we will, you will be receiving notices. We apologize to the resource persons present here who were not called, also those virtually present. So, as agreed upon, and without objection on the part of this committee, this committee hearing is hereby suspended. Thank you.
Do your job, and then ngayon, pag importation, excited, excited kayo. So, tama nga sinasabi nila na kayo eh, Department of Importation, hindi kayo developmental, yang Department of Agriculture. Yun lang po, I want to make that manifestation.
We take note of that, Senator Villar. You may not reply, Administrator Serapika, because we will have another round next week. I am serving notice that we will be inviting you next week. I'm sure you will be here, just as you volunteered to be here despite your circumstances surrounding your late arrival. So we'll be inviting you. You did not answer?
Mr. Chair, quick, quick manifestation.
This will be the order, so to finalize this, because we have to convene the plenary as per directive of Senator Zubiri. The quick manifestation of Senator De La Rosa, the five-minute questioning of Senator Kaitano based on the order of arrival, and the minority leader will be given the chance to ask questions likewise. Thereafter, we will suspend. The other resource persons not questioned. I know how important your time is. We will be asking you next week. We all know that you have volunteered to be here in the interest of the nation's farmers as well as the sugar industry. We hope to see you again. Senator De La Rosa is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to move that PITC will be invited in the succeeding hearing, Mr. Chair. That's all, Mr. Chair.
The secretaries have directed to invite PITC as well as the Bureau of Customs, as requested by Senator Tulfo a while ago. Senator Kaitano is recognized for his five-minute questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we will give up our reservation of the plenary next week so that you can continue there, given the interest on this issue and given it's so important. I hope, Yusek Sebastian and Administrator Serapika realizes, hindi ito simpleng bagay lang eh. I mean, hindi lang 'yung industriya ang na-yug-yug dito, no? Ang consumers natin, buong Pilipinas, no? Hirap na-hirap na sa COVID. Hirap na-hirap na sa pagtaas ng presyo. Tapos nabulaga dito sa asukal. So, first question lang, kasi I want to pursue the point that there seems to be a recurring theme that someone or some people gave the impression that the president wants this. Meron po bang board member o Yusek na Marites ang pangalan sa SRA?
Anybody from SRA, Yusek? Ah, Mr. Serapika.
May I have your question again, Your Honor?
Meron po bang board member o opisyalis na Marites sa inyo?
Sa SRA, I do not know anyone of Marites na member ng board.
Sa DA po, may Yusek bao Asek na Marites?
None, Your Honor.
Eh bakit kumalat 'yung chismes na gusto to ng presidente? Sino ang Marites sa inyo? May we ask, Mr. President? I don't want to put the industry in hot water, no? But grabe na pinagdadaan na nila. Nasabi po ng presidente nila kanina, Mr. Chairman, na they were given the impression. Can I ask him lang, anong circumstance? Did when they were called, sinabi ba na gusto ni presidente to or what? Let's get to the bottom of that, because it's not only one or two people who have said here in this hearing na nagkakaroon ng ano, ng impression na gusto ng presidente, kaya sumunod na lang 'yung iba.
Are you referring that question to Mr. Serapika or to Mr. Lamata?
Lamata.
Mr. Lamata, are you still there, virtually?
Yes po, yes po, Mr. Senator.
Sir, you heard the question, you can reply.
Yes po.
Sir, how did you get that impression, sir?
Well, we were told, we were told by SRA individuals, all our members, we were told that this is a national emergency because of the high prices on retail. We are there, the president therefore ordered that 300,000 metric tons should be imported to the country ASAP without further ado. And who are we to question the wisdom of the president? So we signed, we signed, and we sent in our resolution that we are agreeable for 300,000 refined. What came out in the SO4, Mr. Senator, kakalahati 150 raw, 150 refined. 'Yung roko, it will come on November, and we are already milling. Patay 'yung industriya, Mr. Senator. Tinong kikinabang diyan? Tatlo or apat lang na may mga refineries. Kilala po ang kikinabang diyan. Patay ang buong planters, and the consumers will still be problematic. So mali yun.
To sir, when you said people from SRA, mahi- ma- this is more than one person, no?
Yes po, kasi pinakalat nila eh, pinakalat nila sa lahat na this is, these are orders of the president. So yun po, 'yung SO3 and SO4, the same, orders of the president daw.
Do you recall one or two of the highest position who said the same thing? For example, sir, did Administrator Serapika, was he one of those or hindi po?
Yes po, kasi he talks to his friendly federations. Nag-uusap-usap sila. Eh 'yung mga friendly federations po, may mga connection din sa amin mga federasyon. So yun, talk of the town na yan po, na galing sa kanya.
So nung nakita niyo 'yung order number four at nakapirma for the president, it bolstered your, or it affirmed your ditok, no? Na gusto ng presidente to, kasi it was signed for President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. Tama po ba?
Tama po, sir, tama po. But we were shocked to believe na illegal pala.
Yes, so going back, Administrator, have you been telling people na gusto ng presidente to?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I never said those. What we discussed during the stakeholders' meeting were numbers, were data coming from the SRA.
Okay.
And the shortfall of the raw and refined sugar.
Sige po. That's why I'm giving a chance to answer that. But if we go deeper, marami namang taong involved dito, as the Senate President said, isang SRA member mismo, 'yung din ang sinabi, that he was given the impression, no? So before I go back to the signature, kanina po, sir, sabi niyo, kaya tinanggal 'yung performance bond para to lessen the burden on the consumers. How will it lessen the burden on the consumers? At hindi namang po ang consumers ang nagbabayad ng performance bond. Hindi namang po bababa ang presyo, at hindi rin namang po babagal 'yung importation, hindi po ba?
Your Honor, siyempre, ipapatong nila yun sa cost nila ng sugar nila pagdating ng puwerto, at saka siyempre...
Sir, why would, bakit nila ipapatong? Eh hindi namang po to expense. Pagka-na-perform, makukuha nila pabalik, hindi po ba?
Yes po.
So, kaya nga may SRA para sabihin din sa kanila kung anong pwede nilang ipatong at hindi, hindi po ba? Binabantayan niyo rin po 'yung presyo, hindi po ba? Is that correct?
We just monitor prices, Your Honor.
Yes, but part of monitoring, it is not a passive monitoring. No, it's like in the Bible, when you say you wait on the Lord, you wait on Jesus, that's hupomeno, diba? That's actively waiting for them. When you monitor, it's not just for the sake to say, oy, 80 pesos na pala, 90 pesos. It's also para mag-comment kayo kung unjustified 'yung taas ng presyo, hindi po ba?
Tama po, Your Honor.
Meaning, there is no reason to remove the performance bond because you... because it should not have been added to the price anyway. Kung sa sabi niyo, sir, may tinanggal kayong tax, may tinanggal kayong fee, may tinanggal kayong, let's say, kailangan ilagay sa warehouse yun ng isang araw, diba? 'Yan mga yan, mapabawasan talaga presyo. Pero ang performance bond, pag tinanggal mo, wala dapat epekto sa presyo yan.
More often than not, in this case, that retail prices are already very high, your honor. We anticipate that the traders will really take advantage of the situation, your honor.
Well, let's leave it there, no? Because we can all give our reasons, but this is the first time I heard na ang performance bond would add a cost, no? So next, sir, ang sabi po sa inyo, dinelegate sa inyo ng board...
Yes. Senator Coco Pimentel is waiting likewise.
I apologize to my colleague.
Hula ba, plenary?
Sige po.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Sabi niyo po, kaya dinelegate sa inyo ang reclassification kasi kailangan mabilis kumilos. Tama po ba?
Tama po.
Okay. It tatlong araw lang namang tumilos 'yung board eh. So, gaano kabilis pa gusto ng board kumilos ka? Isang minuto, limang minuto? Usually, dine delegate yan, halimbawa, ng board of ng isang kompanya sa CEO. Kuntingin nila, every quarter pa kasi magme-meeting ang board or every month 'yung board, that's why. But even then, they don't usually delegate it to the CEO, they delegate it to a executive committee. So hindi ko po maintindihan bakit po ibibigay sa inyo kung mabilis naman ang board niyo.
Only on extremely urgent situation like in this case that we are in a shortage of sugar and very extremely high price.
Sir, wala na akong time, so tatanungin ko lang, wala kayong Viber or WhatsApp?
I have.
So hindi kayo pwedeng may Viber group sa board pag urgent at i-approve pa rin ang board? So anyway, I'll leave it there, Mr. Chair, because nga, we have two colleagues na nandito pa. But may also reserve some time later on and we'll look deeper into it. My concern, Mr. Chair, is that we have hundreds of GOCs and they are watching this. And sa good practices nila, walang problema. Pero sa practices ng ganito, napakahirap po, baka maubos oras natin sa kakainbestiga. So thank you to the gentleman for answering the question.
Thank you, Senator Caetano. Senator Caetano just reminded me, committee secretary, that you have to invite likewise the Office of the Government Corporate Counsel for the next hearing. Recognize the arrival of Senator, I mean Marcos. Senator Coco Pimentel, the minority leader, you have five minutes before we suspend. And thereafter, we will proceed to the plenary. Senator Pimentel, you have the floor.
I'm ready to give way to the lady senator if she want to ask questions.
Yes, I think many of the points have already been expounded quite thoroughly. I'd just like to request that in the following hearing, the new officials of the SRA please be present so that we know what the steps are moving forward. Thank you, Senator Pimentel and the chairman.
Sir, I mean, the committee secretary is likewise directed to invite the newly appointed members of the SRA board. Senator Pimentel, please proceed.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Naging controversial, putong ating sugar order number four because 'yung, iba 'yung lack of authority, iba, alisin natin yun. But even 'yung sa quantity of the sugar that the board wanted to allow to be imported, 300,000 metric tons. Now, tell me if what I've read is correct that the president has allowed the importation of 150,000 metric tons. Is that correct as far as you know, Administrator Serapika?
I do not know, your honor.
So, saan ko nabasa yun? Yusek Sebastian, nabasa mo ba yun or nabalitaan mo?
Yes, your honor, that is in the news that the president is proposing 150,000 metric tons for importation.
Ang gusto ko sabihin, so the decision of the... Ilan kayo tao nun who signed SO4? Tatlo lang ba kayo?
We are saying, your honor.
Your four.
Four, including...
Your after your four because Yusek Sebastian signed on behalf of the president. So, in effect, the basic decision to import sugar has been confirmed by the president in his decision to import sugar. Correct or not correct? Yusek or an admin, sino pong kayo? Any of the four who signed?
Yes, your honor.
Correct, diba? Except that, 'yung SO4 ninyo could be criticized for allowing too much importation. Ganun lang. So, ang tanong ko, aside from the authority, sawag na muna 'yung lack of authority kasi may mga memo circular yan, aanalize pa natin yan. Pero tanong ko sa inyo, matagal na kayong nasa SRA admin na 2016. You said, "How about the others?" Si Beltran, Attorney Beltran, matagal na rin po ba as far as you know?
2016.
2016. How about Mr. Valderama, as far as you know?
Recently, he was appointed August only.
August, huh? Okay, but definitely you have some expertise on sugar matters. How about you, Yusek Sebastian? You're just the representative of the president in the SRA, but are you familiar or can be considered an expert on sugar matters?
No, your honor.
No, okay. So ito si admin Serapika. Ikakayo po ang ano dito. What led you to that number, the 300,000 metric tons?
Your honor, these are based on data. The SRA is the repository of all records of the production of all mills and refineries. On a weekly basis, they are transmitted to the SRA by way of SMS. And these are calculated also on a weekly basis. And from there, we can do projections on what happens on every particular issue. And in this case, your honor, the shortage, we are just even putting it on the minimal based on the three-year average monthly demand of the raw sugar at 170,000 metric tons. Now, with regards to the refined sugar, taking into consideration the balances for SO3, it will come out almost just 100-something that will total to 300,000 metric tons. That is just to walk us through for three months based on at 85,000 metric tons per month consumption on refined sugar.
So you do not plan it up to December 31 of a calendar year? Hindi pa yon. So hindi pa ending, sa mata ninyo hindi pa palal ending 'yung SO4, pwede pa magkaroon ng SO5?
Yes, most likely because we base our data, like for example, sugarcane farming or plantation, your honor, is very dependent on climate. In fact, Bukidnon is always our balancing factor. But this time around, because of the cloud cover in Bukidnon, there was not much solar radiation to the sugarcane fields. That's why this time also, the production in Bukidnon is also lower than expected.
Okay, so you use data. Ngayon, ito the recent decision of the president himself to authorize the importation of 150,000 metric tons. Hindi ko palaman alam ang detail niya kung refined sugar yun or raw sugar yun, or what kind of sugar yun. What data? Now, what data do you think supported this new figure, lesser figure of 150,000 metric tons?
With your respect to the president, your honor, I have no idea.
Yusek, what do you think? Where did the president get his data or where did his advisors get their data to come up with a different... Pero 'yung decision to import, pareho kayo eh. Can you confirm eh? But sa quantity lang po tayo nagkaiba, kalahati. So, ang gusto ko sabihin, had you decided in SO4 to import 150,000 metric tons, baka walang issue. Kasi after the issue, ang decision is to import 150,000 metric tons. Where do you think that figure came from?
No personal...
No theories, no theories, no 150,000 metric tons. So, who do you think should be invited in the next hearing so that we can? Kasi ganitong point two, I want to go through your decision-making process, what's going on in your mind. And then it rin, the president in coming up with the decision, ano what went through his mind? Because baka meron tayong data dyan na unreliable na po, maybe bloated. Baka bloated po 'yung ating... How do you compute, sir, the demand for sugar, for the different kinds of sugar in the domestic market? How is that computed?
Actually, sir, putting it simply, this is the data of PSA and the DA. Fifty percent of our total production goes to the industrials. Yes, the balance of 50% is broken into 32% goes to the households and 18% goes to the institutional sector, meaning hotel, hospitals, and restaurants.
We have that, Senator Minority Leader, we have that in the files where the division of the sugar would go. But just to remind the gentleman that in one minute, we have to convene the plenary.
So maybe I can suspend Mr. Chairman, but be allowed to...
Yes, you will be the first.
Yeah, to be the first.
You will be the first when we resume hearing on Tuesday.
Siguro. Last word ko lang, you're giving us the distribution of the harvest eh. But actually, the question of is the number, diba? The consumption. Tama pa rin 'yung 50, 32, 18, pero what is now the consumption? So to be continued, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you to the good minority leader. And to repeat what the chair mentioned a while ago, we will suspend. And then we will... You will be receiving notices. We apologize to the resource persons present here who were not called. Also those virtually present. So, as agreed upon and without objection on the part of this committee, this committee hearing is hereby suspended. Thank you.
Do your job, and then ngayon pag...
And without objection on the part of this committee, this committee hearing is hereby suspended. Thank you.